I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville, and also our...
Joint Powers Financing Authority.
Joint Powers Finance Authority. And at this time, I would like to, we'll start by having the invocation, and then that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. And the invocation will be given by Jean Selick from the Bama'edar Shel Ma'Allah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The headpiece is called a yarmulke, and we wear it to show that there is something above As you may have heard or read, Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu has recently been elected to serve another term as Prime Minister. At his inauguration, a prayer was given, obviously in Hebrew, and I'm going to do the same in English. "Remember our people who could not escape past tyranny and hate. May their memory be more than a distant shadow; for their dreams left unfulfilled and lives taken too soon, we remember. Remember our brothers and sisters who sacrificed, gave birth, and may their courage be our inspiration and our strength; for life cut short and vision unrealized, we remember. Remember the fallen of Israel's defense forces and soldiers all over the world, the victims of terror and tragedy. May the darkness of their loss not obscure the light of peace. They were in love with God and in love with life; for the agony, the tears, the mothers and the fathers, for the children who were and for the children yet to be, we remember." Amen. I'd like to sit, no, it's okay.
Go ahead, Jean.
I'd like, I'd like to tell you that, take a minute or two, that it's an unusual day for me. My father had three brothers and two sisters, none of which were able to get out. Some years ago, the German government locked up all the records of all the people that were murdered, nine million, six and a half million Jews, and the rest were non-Jews. There were ministers, Catholic priests, everybody who opposed the government. Hitler killed children who were born with some kind of a crippling disease, homosexuals. It amounted to nine million, and the Germans kept very accurate records of everyone. About six years ago, a lawsuit was filed by the Holocaust Museum in Washington, D.C. against the German government to release these records. The German government said, "No, we will not release them because it's an invasion of The lawsuit went to a higher court. Eventually, a judge said, "No, you must release these records." People want to know where their relatives ended up. I have filed all the names of my uncles and aunts, nieces, nephews. So far, I've only gotten back one, which was my grandmother. This morning at 10 o'clock, my phone rang. It was Susan Goldberg from Washington, D.C., and she said, "Jean, I have some news for you. We found your uncle." And she said, "I will send you the papers. We're still looking for the others." But it's odd that I should come here today to remember Holocaust. When that phone rang at 10 o'clock this morning, and Susan said, "We found one of your uncles," it's pretty amazing, 63 years later, that the records are just now being given out, and we can finally know the date on which they died, so that we can say, on that particular day, we can recite Kaddish, which is the prayer of remembrance for people who have passed away. Thank you very much.
We have a special presentation by the City of Victorville. Vaughn?
Mayor Cabrealis, thank you for moving this agenda item up. We have some special visitors with here, with us here today, and I would like to present to you our first reality-based website program for the City of Victorville. The Public Information Department teamed up with our Water Department, and we have an employee from the Finance Department who's working with us. And we have created a show featuring a family, a Victorville family, and I would like to have Monica Peterson on my staff give you a little bit more information about that.
Thank you. Each week, our web-based reality program will give online viewers tips on water conservation with the help of our first participating family. We're already in our fourth week of filming, and we're really excited to present the new City of Victorville program. For this first series of videos, we've teamed up with our Water Department's Conservation Supervisor, Donna Aston, as well as our Finance Department Purchasing Manager, John Mendiola, who happens to be our host of our program. Sean, please stand. Since we're into our fourth week, we put together a commercial to preview the program. So now, I'd like to invite you to take a look at your screens as we premiere our first commercial for Living the Green Life.
Hello, and welcome to the City of Victorville's premier reality web show, Living the Green Life. For the next eight weeks, we will be following the Ray family. Together, we will explore valuable eco-friendly lessons. Over the next few episodes, the Ray family will meet their water meter, perform an indoor water audit, replace their old water-guzzling toilet with a new high-efficiency toilet, tour the famous California Aqueduct, and learn about the water cycle.
You're not flush, but trash and toilet, and extra toilet paper down the toilet.
If you're wondering how you can be our next family to live in the green life, go to the City of Victorville website at www.civictorville.ca.us.
We're hoping that with this online program, we'll be able to encourage our residents new water conservation tips. And like I said, with the help of our participating family, I'd like to introduce them to you now. This is the Ray family. Please stand. And they have graciously invited us into their lives for eight weeks to follow them in a true reality program, so we really, really do appreciate their time. We also have teamed up with Odyssey, and we have a student. Her name is Wanda, and she is part of our editing team. I had hoped that she would be here. Not sure, well, she's, well, she's not, but that's, that's part of the co-op that we've put together between our city departments and the high school. So we're really appreciative of your support of this program. We're sure it'll be a big hit with the, with the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions?
I think it's very cute.
I thought we were gonna watch the whole thing.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go into public comment. This is the section that gives the opportunity to the people attending the council meeting to address the council on any given item. The council cannot respond. Obviously, we don't know what the items will be until they're presented. However, they'll either be referred to one of our staff members, or if there's merit, it will be placed on the agenda for a future meeting. You have three minutes to address the council. The, the public comment is for all the, covers all the agencies that we're representing here tonight, so we'll now go into public comment, and I'll have Chuck Hanson. Chuck Hanson?
Good evening, council members. My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at 22113 Sioux Road in Apple Valley, and it's that time of year again where May is National Bike Month, and once again, we're asking for your help. We know that there's lots of traffic problems. We know that there are many people in the high desert who would help to ease this problem by getting out of their cars and riding their bicycle. We know they don't do this because there are no safe places for them to ride. We are again providing an opportunity for you to help these people realize their desire. We are supporting a bicycle ride on Bear Valley Road on Monday evening, May 4th, 2009, at 6:00 P.M. We're all invited. The ride will begin at Lowe's Parking Lot west of the 15 freeway and end at the Jess Ranch Marketplace in Apple Valley. And I would like the local police department to know that we will be riding down there in a pack, and the riders are requesting that you listen to their requests for bike lanes on the streets in the high desert. And this will be the third year, and it keeps growing every year. And last year, we had Mayor Rowley ride, and I expect more council members to ride this year, and I'm hoping to see all of you out there. If you can't ride, come out and meet the people and talk to them. And yeah, anyway, please join us in this ride. And Mike rode with me that one year, and I think he understands the needs for bike lanes.
That was quite an eye, the one ride was quite an eye-opening for me. I was shocked. I was shocked you let me ride that expensive bicycle, but on top of that, I was amazed I didn't run into somebody, and I was rather fearful out there, even though you're doing all the right things and you're complying with the laws, it's still a scary environment to mix the bicycles and the cars, and yet they're there.
And I gave Yvonne Hester a bunch of flyers she said she'd put up for people to take, and then I, the city clerk, some. And there's other information about what's happening worldwide about bicycles, how it's becoming more, more acceptable. Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I want to see all of you out there.
I want to add one more thing to his story. It's not directly connected to the event, but about two weeks ago, Phil, how do I say his last name, Co-Heagan? The celebrity on the, on the TV that does the race across, around the world, he was here, he rides, Phil rides across the country. He came through Victorville, stopped for a while, my wife and I were there, and then he bicycled all the way across the country, and each segment, he puts about 100 miles in. Well, the local folks that were there, one of them was my former student who was even there, and they rode for 100 miles with him. I don't know how, how far they go, but anyway, he was bicycle riding across the country. I imagine he could tell some tales of some near incidences, even in that environment, as protected as it might be. Quite a ride.
Yes, I read about him, and in 1997, I rode my bike from Saritas, California to Washington, D.C., and as a result of that trip is why I live here right now. So I won't, it's too long a story to tell you what happened, but anyway, that's the reason for it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. William Formay?
Hello, Mayor Cabrealis, and council members and staff. My name's William Formage. I live at 20984 Lone Eagle Road. I'm here to help support Chuck's bike ride. I'm one of the original Vans members from 1982, and I would like to ask for a bike skateboard park for our high-desert people. You know, every time I come over here to Victorville, and I go up and down Seventh Street, I see these kids riding their skateboards in these broken-down parking lots and stuff, and you know, you guys probably read my stories in the Daily Press where I've been trying to get Apple Valley to build us a bike skateboard park. And, you know, last week, me and my sons went to Vegas, they got over 25 skate parks in Vegas that let bikes and skateboards ride at the same time, and my son won third, a gold medal for third, and my other son got sixth, and I got seventh. You know, I'll be 45 in May, but I went and went ahead and tried to do this contest with these young guys, and you know, no broken bones. You know, as long as we wear our helmets and our pads, it's a safe sport, you know, and we'd like to get a bike park built in all the different towns up here. Right now, only Fielin has a bike park that lets bikes in at the church over on Sheep Creek Road. You know, and these are great kids that just want a place to do their sport, you know, because the little, the little leaguers and the footballer kids, they all got their places to do their sport and soccer and all, and these kids would just like a place to, to ride. You know, I'd also like to see if Victorville could get with Aspiria to build bike lanes up and down Bear Valley Road. You know, you guys build it on your side, let them build it on their side, so it'd be a safe, safer people doing the bike lanes. And I was here like eight months ago, and Terry Caldwell told me one of the park guys to get ahold of, but I, do you have that guy's name? Like the head, the guy that leads?
They're here in the audience.
Oh, the park, the guys that run that? Okay. Well, that's all I got. I'd like to see if we can get a park built.
Thank you very much. Dorothy Miller?
I have quite a problem going on here. I've brought, come up to you people many a times and mentioned about the water bills, and they're together now. The trash and the water bills are supposedly to be together. My neighbor received a bill, one for trash and one for water. They're not together. Now, we're wasting money. We're wasting envelopes. We're wasting everything and time, and we need to get this stuff straightened out. I gave Mr. Cox some information, and my trash bill happened to be four months behind. I never received a trash bill. I received my water bill, but I didn't get the trash bill. Now, I've been on the phone for quite a while today with different ones from the city. One's telling me that we cannot put my water and trash bill together. Then the other one tells me, "No, we cannot put them together. We can, we can't." Now, I talked to Reggie out in the hall, and he caught me, and he said, "Oh, yes, we can. We're working on that. It's all going to be taken care of." Now, is it going to be taken care of this time, or is it going to be the same thing over and over and over again? I'm tired of it. I really am. Then we got another thing. No trips, right? Oh, seven people went back east. Now, we don't have the money to be spending to send seven people back to do one thing. That is absolutely ridiculous. When will the 7/8 audit come out? I really would like to know, and I'd like an answer in writing when this is going to happen. I've gotten answers before from Park and Rec. The Park and Sunset Ridge is going to be open by the end of March. Not happened. The fire station's supposed to be open by the end of April. Not happened. The road from Eucalyptus to 395, we don't have the money to do that. I've even gone now to Metzenfeld to see if we can't get that open for the county fire people that's going to man that station to get out to 395 to go across if there's a fire across the road, instead of going down to Bear Valley Road or out on Sycamore. There is a signal there already for the other side, but not on our side. Now, we need to get this stuff taken care of. I mean, we don't have money, but we got money to travel. Not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Liffert Storkowski Ski?
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members, I debated on whether to come to speak this evening, but recently in a newspaper article citing the closure of Desert Comm, I felt urged to and compelled to make a couple of comments publicly to you. I have been, as most of you know, serving Desert Comm and the City of Victorville Fire up until the changeover to San Bernardino County Fire, with all their communications needs and the 911 dispatch center in Victorville that was developed by our mayor himself when he was the fire chief. And there are several factors that I feel compelled to respond to based on Article 1 of which, and the most important of which, is signing communications efficiency. San Bernardino County is notorious for wanting to take over basically the entire county for both police and fire prevention. Their system, the radio system they're currently using is roughly 23 years old. It is recently been noted, their county has recently been notified that their vendor no longer supports the system. It is antiquated. When their current level of inventory of boards to repair failures of the system is at an end, there will be no future support for the county system. They'll be standing on their own. It is not a digital compliant system. It does not meet the mandate by APCO and the FCC for P25, which is interoperability, by 2012. In order to do that, the county's looking at somewhere by, by current estimates between $45 and $50 million to do so countywide. The system that our mayor had me begin developing for the City of Victorville and the RFPA, including Apple Valley Fire, Yurmo Daggett, Newberry Springs, Hasperia when they were a member of the RFPA, as well as Barstow, is a digital system. It is an enhanced digital system that in every way far exceeds the capabilities of the county system. The second aspect of this is that it is P25 compliant. Former Chief Becker, four years ago, embarked on a plan and gave me specific direction to upgrade the system to digital P25 capability, so that the city, and all the cities actually in the RFPA, would be compliant by 2012 for P25. Further, Apple Valley Fire, Barstow Fire, and Victorville Fire, all the recent purchases of radios in the last two years have been mandated at P25, so all of those portables and mobile radios were already compliant with the 2012 mandate. My concern for the City of Victorville and Apple Valley with the closure of Desert Comm and the Comm Center taking it over and out of Rialto is twofold. Number one, if we ever have a serious catastrophe, communications is going to go down on the microwave network from San Bernardino County. We will be an isolated entity with no dispatch services on the radio whatsoever. The restoration process average would be 24 to 48 hours to get the system back up and running in case of catastrophic failure. Can the City of Victorville survive 24 to 48 hours with immediate response on 911 calls? It's my opinion it cannot. We do not have plans for a regional dispatch center currently in the high desert. I know there's been discussion at the fire level and with ISD in San Bernardino County, but with the closure of Desert Comm, excuse me, with the decision of the closure of Desert Comm, all dispatch services for the high desert are now going to be coming from Rialto. We have no control over our public safety, zero. We have no control over our paramedic response, or our fire suppression, or fire response with this action. I thought that you, as the council members, should know this. It concerns me as a citizen of the community, and I'm concerned for every other citizen out there, young and old alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go into the agendas, and first is we have the Library Board of Trustees agenda, revisions to the agenda.
The revisions.
Consent calendar. Next, our Southern California Logistics Rail Authority agenda, revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
This one is for Councilman Terry Caldwell.
There are no revisions to the Airport Authority agenda. The only item is Item 3, consent calendar.
Approval?
Victorville Redevelopment Agency, revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
Consent calendar. Who for approval? Item number four, request to approve a consent to dual representation agreement by and between the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Auto Park at Valley Center Association. Item number five, request to approve a change order of a contract with Fence Corp. Incorporation for the SELA Security Upgrade Project Phase N, Phase 1, in the amount of $2,006, $2,022, and 75 cents.
Can I ask one question, please, on this one? Change order, is that an increase? Pretty half?
Yes, that's an increase to the original contract. The purpose is to relocate the airport fence adjacent to the Dr. Pepper project, so we're actually saving money by adding it on to the existing contract rather than going out with an independent contract to do that work.
Thank you.
Your motion?
So moved.
Item number six, request to approve the second amendment to the Dr. Pepper Owner Participation Agreement, OPA, the American Bottling Company. Next, next is Victorville, Victorville Water District 8 agenda, revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
Item number three is a public hearing, a request to adopt Resolution Number VWD-09-001 entitled, "Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, Approving a Lease Agreement, An indenture of Trust and Insolvent Sale Agreement, and a Private Placement Memorandum in Conjunction with the Issuance by the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority of its Waste Water Revenue Notes, 2009 Series Taxable, and Approving the Taking of Certain Other Actions in Connection There With." And this is a companion item to City Council Agenda, public hearing item number nine. Can we do them both together?
Yeah, and I believe it's also a companion item, public hearing for the financing authority, correct? Yeah, so it'd be appropriate.
We do all three?
Those two together.
I will open up the public hearing, but before we do that, we have a presentation by Development Director.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this item is placed on the agenda to further an action previously undertaken by- an action previously undertaken by the Water District, the City Council, and even the Redevelopment Agency with respect to the overall infrastructure funding program for Sela. And very generally, what that infrastructure funding program outlined in February was a funding plan for infrastructure that is not only public streets and roads, curbs and gutters related to the Dr. Pepper project, but also related to the wastewater treatment facility. That was probably the largest component of the entire funding program. And then have also, or also included reclaimed water-related improvements. This item before you, both this item and the companion item on the City Council Agenda, and then also is related to the action that's being sought under the Joint Powers Financing Authority Agenda are related, and I'll try to make this presentation applicable to the action of the Joint Powers Financing Authority as well. But very generally, this item before you furthers that funding plan. I did prepare a memorandum. Unfortunately, I think it just got out today. It was supposed to have got out to you yesterday. It kind of outlines a slight change in the capital structure to which we had included as a part of the overall funding program that you approved in February. But we actually believe this capital structure is better than the capital structure that was outlined previously. Altogether, it's still raising the same amount of money, but very generally, what we did change was the issuer. Previously, the project was contemplated as a city project. One of the things that we had pursued internally resulting from some direction from council was to try to identify opportunities to free up cash that perhaps were being relied upon as a part of the overall financing plan for the infrastructure program. We did that. We identified a couple of sources of security. One particularly was property tax, which we were actually using to secure the notes. We also looked heavily upon the anticipated cash balance in the sanitary fund to help serve as an equity piece to the overall capital structure of the sewer plant. That has changed. We've actually now exercised legal authorities that the Water District has to be in the sewer business, to provide sewer services, and we've actually looked to them to exercise those services, which is why the lease agreement, which is probably new to you, is being requested and recommended for approval. We're actually, very basically, the lease agreement allows an opportunity for the city to lease the system, the collection system, to the Water District, where the Water District then would be permitted to utilize the revenues generated from the system to discharge into the industrial treatment plant, which it would own, and then be responsible for the O and M operations and maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements to that system. Nothing is going to physically change with respect to how we do business. It's more a legal structure that we've changed to accommodate the capital structure. What it does do is it allows or creates an opportunity in the future as we have determined a value for the system. It'll actually create an opportunity where if there's net revenues from the operations of the sewer enterprise, it gives an opportunity for the sewer enterprise from the, through the Water District to reimburse or pay lease payments to the city of Victorville, which actually becomes discretionary revenues to the city. We'll rely on capital funds from the Water District to fund some short-term needs, but we're primarily relying on the issuance of intermediate-term revenue notes to secure up to $55 million. We're actually expecting to not need much more than 45, but the 55 is a threshold amount that provides us with general flexibility. In addition to the lease agreement, you're being asked to approve, providing that we'll have some nonsubstantive changes, we're actually asking the approval of those documents subject to nonsubstantial changes of staff. But you're being asked to also approve a private placement note, an indenture, an installment sale agreement, and also a proposal for bond and disclosure counsel. I think finally, and one thing that I want to address relative to the documents, and it's mainly for disclosure purposes alone, and it's to bring to the forefront something that's contained in these documents that I don't want to be construed as contrary to what I presented to you in February. In February, I did present to you that our business model, which we still have confidence in, we still believe in, still support the business model that we have, we do not expect that if we achieve that business model that we would have to raise sewer rates as a result of this endeavor. That is still the case. However, if you were to read the, one of the bond-related documents, the note document, there is language in there that does require us to affix rates to cover obligations associated with debt, which could translate into the increase of rates. That is some standard language that we're required to include as a part of the legal structure of this transaction. It's very typical, as I understand it, when financing utilities similar to this. However, we do have a workout structure to where we clearly expect to not have to exercise those provisions with the notes being short-term or intermediate-term notes of about five years. We're expecting as the plant becomes operational, sustainable, and we can prove our case, we actually have workout plans already in place. We know that we do need to unwind a couple of elements of the transaction today to where we can actually qualify for tax-exempt financing. That is definitely a part of our long-term capital structure, is to take these notes out with a tax-exempt debt. And we're also expecting that over time, especially as VBWA increases its rates, we will be the beneficiary of being able to pass those similar rates through, and of course, that would help our revenue model. Helping the revenue model, of course, helps justify the ability to take out a greater debt service. So with that, I wanted to bring that to your attention so that you didn't think that I was saying something or asking you to approve something here today that was contrary to what we maintained in February. With that, I think that generally outlines the structure and the context to the agreements to which we're asking you to approve. We have a number of people in the audience that have been a part of this transaction. The department heads particularly are available to answer any questions. We also have members from our Bond Counsel, Fulbright Jaworski, in attendance, and Jeff Kinsel, Janice Williams, from our underwriter's office. That's available for any questions you might have.
Any questions or comment from the council? Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on Item Three for the Victorville Water District, also companion item Three with the Joint Powers Finance Authority. Other one was the...
City Council Agenda Item Number Nine.
Those wishing to speak on behalf or against the Resolution VWD-09-001, you come to the podium, please. When we should speak for? Speak again. I will now close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would move approval of Item Three, Resolution VWD-09-001, resolution under the Joint Powers Financing Authority in Item Three, O9-001, and the companion item on the City Council Agenda, Item Nine.
And? We have Item Number Four, which is Consent Calendar.
Second.
Item Number Five, is a request to ratify professional services agreement with Charles Z. Fed Act and Company in the amount of $80,000 for auditing services for Victorville Water District for the 2008 fiscal year.
Understand that it was 40, and it was increased because of additional problems that they had to go through?
Red, Reggie, do you want to speak to that? You want me to handle that?
Okay.
The original estimate of 40 was, they, I believe, met with us the day of the last council meeting, and they just got the information. They then got additional information to get their arms around the total scope of the project, and that's, this is a more refined number, and they're on schedule. We'll probably present the audit to you at the next council meeting on the 21st.
Thank you. Approval?
Second.
Say something flippant right about now about how come we can get an audit so quick from one firm and not another, but I probably... Next is the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, revisions to the agenda.
Yes, Mayor Cabral's on City Council Agenda Items Number Five through Eight. They are public hearing items. They do need to be continued to the May 5th meeting, so it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and take any testimony on those, and then continue. And then there are revisions, additional information to Consent Calendar Items 10G and 10H, and those are on the dais.
May I, Mayor Cabral, I believe there is a closed session request to add a closed session item pursuant to Government Code 54, sorry, 54954.2B2 pertaining to pending litigation.
Under the Joint Powers?
No, I'm sorry, this was City Council.
Okay. I'll go into the, city of Victorville City Council Agenda. Revisions to the agenda.
Yes, just the items five through eight in the Consent Calendar Items that have additional information.
If you wanted to add the closed session item for the City Council, this would be the time to, it'd be, it's related to pending threat litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9B2. I'm informed from discussions with the city manager that there's a concern over information he received late Thursday after the posting of the agenda that could essentially subject the city to litigation. There is an immediate need to address the issue, and so upon a finding and a vote by the council, we could add it pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B2.
I'll move the special findings.
Second.
We'll have to do a voice vote on this one because it was not agendized.
Your motion by Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Who was second? Matt Almond, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Item Number Three, which is an appeal hearing. This is an appeal of public hearing, a call to hear arguments for or against the revocation of conditional use permit, PLN-08, dash 00030, Hollywood Entertainment, Billy Smith, that set forth in the following. And before we go into that, we'd like to have a briefing, a short briefing by, by our, Mr. Webb.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you stated, the item before you is an appeal hearing, and the appellant is Billy Smith, operator of Hollywood Entertainment. At the regularly scheduled meeting of February 11, 2009, the planning commission by unanimous vote approved a resolution revoking the conditional use permit due to violation of the conditions of approval, which had allowed for alcohol sales at 15378 Ramona Avenue. The basis for that revocation was for nonconformance with the approved conditions of approval, nonconformance with the Type 42 license issued by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, nonconformance with Title 18 Sign and Landscape Standards, and nonconformance with Section 1302 of the Municipal Code nuisances. The last two are minor infractions, basically as is detailed in our staff report along with the attached police report of incidents prior to this evening. There were activities there that included, and the primary basis for this was selling alcohol to minors, and in this case, minors, anyone under the age of 21, ABC considers minors. There were 17-year-olds that admitted to have been in the establishment once the police arrived, and there were some injuries at the establishment in the parking lot, et cetera, as detailed again in the report. So it's, the revocation is not for the incident itself, whether or not the incident was, was, could have been prevented, or was the fault of the applicant is not the issue. But instead, the fact that they had violated the conditions of approval and the ABC license by selling alcohol to minors and having minors within the establishment, at the very least having minors within the establishment, according to the allegations. And that concludes the staff report. I'm available for any questions, as is Detective Weevil with the Police Department.
Thank you.
I have to call, keep public hearing.
Correct, this is, this is an appeal hearing, and give the appellant the opportunity to be heard.
I will now open the public hearing, an appeal, public hearing, to hear the argument for or against the revocation of conditional use permit, PLN-08, dash 0030. Those wishing to speak on behalf, please come to the podium.
My name's Billy Smith, I'm the owner of Hollywood Entertainment.
Mic in front of you, please.
To the council and the mayor, I'm Billy Smith, the owner of Hollywood Entertainment. Therefore, now, no liquor served, you know, to the minors that night. So I don't know where that came from. Now, the fights, the fight broken outside in the parking lot. Now, we, that was under control. Now, if somebody came to the parking lot, they minors, I mean, we can't control that part. But there was no minor inside the club at all. I mean, I have witnesses, I have, I have my security guard here right now. We put said that, I don't see, I don't see the kids here. The kids here right now? Say it was in the club? Witness here? There any witness?
Put the mic in front of you.
If there any witness, that was in the club, that there was minors.
An appeal hearing, he can, he can provide testimony with respect to his appeal and support of his, his appeal if he's got other evidence that he wants to submit, that would be appropriate.
I mean, evidence said there was kids and a minor, there was in the club. I don't know what, what kids in the club that was minor. If the cops, if officers say that was, that it was minors inside the club, he should have their name, and they should be here in the court right now.
Were you cited by the Alcohol Beverage Control?
Was I cited? No.
How did it come to the attention of our planning department?
Say it again now, sir?
How did our, the city officials know of this violation?
That's new to me right now. Now, Mr. Webb, you said that my brother had...
You have to address the council here.
Okay.
Yes.
He said that it was minor before, before, before operated at the club? When was that?
That when your brother operated.
My brother, my brother never got citation for no, uh, minor inside the club.
Well, I'd like to hear from the detectives instead, sorry.
Yes. Are you through with your testimony?
And I, I brought some witness here, too.
Thank you. Detective here?
Um, the previous, um, citation that was received at the location was not for minors in the, uh, club. It was actually for sales of alcohol without a, a valid license. They then submitted, um, another application to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Department, which was granted to them, and it was to serve actually beer and wine at the location, but no one under the age of twenty-one. On the evening in question, I was at the office, and we had a call of a shooting that occurred there. Um, being that I was right across the street, I immediately responded to the location. I made contact with Mr. Smith's brother inside the location. I noted, um, T-shirts on the floor, blood. Asked him where the victim was. He said there was no victim. I asked him where the shooting was. He said they did not have a shooting there, that the only problem they had was the minor fight, and they took care of it. I instructed, uh, responding officers to go ahead and stop any vehicles because I noted numerous vehicles leaving the area. Um, as I was talking, Mr. Smith, a young lady came up to me, started staring at me. Obviously, she was not twenty-one years old. I asked her for her ID. She did not have any. She subsequently went outside. I followed her outside with her sister. Um, she produced an ID. One of the girls produced an ID that made her under twenty-one. The other girl still did not have any ID whatsoever. Mr. Smith, uh, kept on telling me that these people were not inside the location, but on their hand, they had an X. I asked him where they obtained the X. They said it was placed on there upon entering the location. We contacted another individual who was seventeen, who had a large cut to his forehead. He also had an X on his hand. Asked him how he got it. He said he got it inside the location. Uh, numerous kids were complaining because they wanted us to go back and get their ten dollars entry fee back, and we refused to do so.
Questions? You made this presentation to the planning commission, is that correct, or?
No, sir. They never asked me any questions at the planning commission, sir.
Well, the planning commission made a unanimous decision. How did they come to that conclusion? They just took
Due to the police report. Yes, sir.
Questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
I do have, uh, Diana Carloni, um, Turn it along.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Diana Carloni. I am a local attorney. I represent Jerry Burns and Lila Burns, who are the owners of the property at one five three seven eight Ramona Avenue, Victorville, which is the establishment which this CUP hearing attaches. I rise here to inform you that, um, this is information only. We take no position for or against your, uh, decision that you have to make tonight. We do rise to tell you that on March sixth, two thousand nine, we served a three-day notice to pay rent or quit upon that establishment and all of the Smith brothers. The past due rent at that time was sixty-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. After three days, no rent has been paid. To date, no rent has been paid. We filed our legal action on March sixteenth in the Victorville Superior Court as UDVS nine zero zero eight three seven. Our action is an unlawful detainer. It seeks to evict the business from the premises, to restore ourselves to possession of the premises, cancellation of any written agreement, and damages. Regardless of your decision tonight, we intend to go forward with our legal action and evict the business from the premises. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Smith did say he had some witnesses. I guess we should hear.
Okay. Produce your witnesses, please.
Let's see what, what she just said, second call.
Quickly.
Okay. Now, Jerry Burns is our landlord. We gave Jerry a property worth a hundred forty thousand dollars. So that's, that is like, um, put up for Cal Larry. So he had a hundred forty thousand dollars worth of property in his hand right now. So really, we, we do not owe Jerry any money, but that's another case. Okay, so I'm gonna get his
Yes, yes. Get your witness. You have a witness?
Hi, good evening. My name is Dino Mercado. I do, uh, concert events, different places in Southern California, right here in, uh, the area of the high desert also. And, uh, all I can say that I don't know anything about what's going on, on the prior times. I've done a couple of, uh, nonprofit events on that location, some charities also for Toys for Tots on December, and, uh, I never experienced any problems. I never seen any, any underage people drinking. That's my personal stuff when I didn't make my events in there. And, uh, uh, everything was very well taken care of, well illuminated parking lot. I seen security guards. I seen control inside of the premises while I was there on four or five different events. That's my only testimony that I can give to the council tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other witnesses?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Jesse. I own a corporation of security officers, and, uh, basically I was hired by Hollywood Entertainment to, uh, keep the peace and, uh, take control over that situation as far as minors coming in and out of the, uh, premises. And, uh, I'm here to let you guys know that I'm working hand on hand with law enforcement to make sure that everything goes well.
What's the name of the security company?
Advance Security Agency.
Any questions? Were you there on the night of the incident that, uh, Detective, Detective Weevil just testified about?
No, sir.
Are, are you the one that stands at the door and checks IDs as they come in?
Uh, we have several security, trained security guards with the guard licenses that, that are trained to do that. Yes.
Your firm does that?
Thank you.
Mayor Cabralis, if I might, I, I do have a question for the previous speaker who spoke as a witness for the appellant, and I would ask if he were on the premises the night of the incident that Detective Weevil just testified about. I would ask then, Mayor Cabralis, if, if Mr. Smith has any witness here tonight to testify as a recipient witness on-site at the time of the incident that Detective Weevil just talked about.
I'm having a witness because, um, no incident took place that night. Now, Weevil say he had witness. Now, he's, he's the one who should have his witness here, because nothing took place that night.
Well, Mr. Smith, have you read the officer's incident report from that evening?
Have I read it? No, I haven't, I haven't seen it. Now, one question I want to, I want to know is that
If I might, that report was a part of the package of information that went to the planning commissioners and was a part of the public record. Did you not take the time to view the material that was in the packet that was dealing with the subject of the revocation of your conditional use permit when it was before the planning commission?
Uh, I never seen it before. My brother might have seen it. I, I never looked at it. Now, question I want to ask about is, why is Hollywood Entertainment the only club in Victorville that have a CUP? That's why I never understand. Why we the only club that have that? You got, you got three clubs in Victorville, but we marked as the only club that have a CUP.
Well. Webb?
Uh, as Director of Development, um, I have the authority to make a finding of public convenience or necessity, uh, when, when alcoholic sales are involved, and, um, I decided not to, and there is a section of the code that says I can defer it to the planning commission if I see that there is cause. And in this case, due to the prior incidents that occurred under his brother's watch, under a different name, I referred it to the planning commission, and because there were incidents, including alcohol sales without an ABC license, as well as other incidents similar to the, to the one in the report today. So I chose to defer it to the planning commission per code.
Thank you.
Reason second, but this, but the CUP was, was come to us before, um, before the incident ever happened. You know, we can adjust by the, we can adjust by what happens five years ago before we even came up here.
Regardless, you were operating under the same CUP, if, if I'm correct, if, you know, if I hear you correct. So, do you have any other witnesses that were there on, on the night of the incident?
No, I don't know what it is, that, that, that took place.
Thank you. I'll now clo- close the, uh, appeal public hearing. Entertained a motion? I move adoption of proposed resolution oh nine, oh oh nine, which would deny the appeal of the revocation and uphold the previous action of the planning commission.
Second.
We have public hearings, item number four. A public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving amendment, uh, PLN oh nine dash zero 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 three with introduction of ordinance number, uh, twenty-two thirty-six and title in ordinance of the City of Victorville, approving amendment PLN zero nine dash zero 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 three, uh, various amendments of the Victorville Municipal Code to Title eighteen zoning City of Victorville. I'll now open up the, uh, public hearing. Um, those four are against may step up to the podium. Anyone for? Item number four or against? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Entertained a motion?
Okay.
Second.
We have a request to continue of five, six, seven, and eight, but we'll go ahead and open up the public hearings.
Mayor Cabralis, just a point of, uh, form of substance to some extent on the prior action. We didn't read the entire ordinance, and you didn't take a motion to waive reading. While you read the, uh, title, you need a motion to waive the further reading of the ordinance. All it requires is a, is a motion to waive further reading.
There a motion to waive further reading of the ordinance?
Also move.
Second.
Mayor Cabralis, I just need a vote from you.
Okay.
He tried.
Going away.
Am I, understand correct that five, six, seven, and eight will be continued, but we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, but
That's correct.
Item number five, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the adoption of the final mitigated negative declaration for the SCLA Northern Reclaim, Reclaim Water Line. I'll open up the public hearing.
Mayor, you could open up the public hearing on all, uh, one, two, three, four items simultaneously, if you like. Is it five through and including items eight?
I'll open up the public hearing, uh, to include items five through eight. Those four are against may step up to the podium. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Not close it, but
Not close it, just continue it to
Continue it.
The meeting of
May fifth.
May fifth, okay. Item number nine, request to adopt resolution number zero nine zero one five. Okay, oh, I'll get it. Consent calendar? Wait for approval.
Second.
And we did, uh, number item eleven, we get the presentation. Item number twelve, is a request to consider adoption of CP dash zero nine dash zero one, thus temporarily deferring development impact fees, DIF, for industrial, commercial, and multifamily development projects until prior to final inspection, in accordance with the guidelines listed of the staff report. Mr. Webb?
Uh, yes, uh, as you know, the city's, uh, received several requests over the last six months to a year, uh, for temporary deferral of fees and, which has, uh, according to many developers, led to a failure to pull permits, uh, therefore letting permits expire rather than pulling the, the permits, um, when they didn't have the financing in place to pay for the DIF fees, which is approximately between eighty and ninety percent of the total fees charged at the counter at the time of pulling permits. Um, due to that, and due to requests such as Mr. Cantor's, which is, which is attached to the staff report, is just a representative, um, uh, report. Uh, staff has prepared a, a policy which would temporarily defer DIF and BBWRA fees, um, for a set period in time. And the way that the policy reads, uh, oh, by the way, we, we actually have that in place, as you know, currently for single-family residential. It's been a longstanding policy of the city, uh, to defer DIF fees and BBWRA fees until the time of final inspection for single-family residential development. However, that is not in place for commercial, industrial, and multifamily. Seeing that, staff offers this policy, um, for the deferral of, uh, development impact fees and Victor Valley Wastewater Reclamation Authority fees, uh, that they be temporarily deferred for industrial, commercial, and multifamily development projects until prior to final inspection in accordance with the following. Number one, the DIF and BBWRA fee deferral applies to any complete application submitted to building for plan check prior to July first, two thousand and ten. So it's approximately fourteen months allow submittal of any of these projects. All fees shall continue to be calculated at the time of submittal. That doesn't change. This deferral applies only to DIF and BBWR fees, uh, as permitted by BBWRA ordinance number zero zero two D, which establishes a process to allow for DIF fees to be paid at the time of, um, final inspection or certificate of occupancy. All other fees such as permit, plan checks, special district fees, et cetera, are due prior to issuance of any permits. All applicable projects shall pay DIF and BBWR fees prior to final inspection or prior to June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve, whichever comes, comes first. So basically, there's a fourteen-month window that allows a, a developer to submit a project, and if they pull permits anytime up to two thousand and twelve, which is three years plus two months, um, it allows them up to three years maximum, if they were pulling permits tomorrow, um, to defer DIF fees until final inspection, or if they exceed that timeline, and the project stays alive, of course, that they keep working on their project, and they pass the, the two thousand and twelve date, they would have to pay DIF fees on that date of two thousand and twelve, unless the council chooses to extend this policy into the future. Basically, we tried to guesstimate the, the time that this, this economic lull would last, and, um, and so we, we put a reasonable period for development while still keeping it as brief as possible. Um, there shall be, oh, there shall be no refunds for DIF or BBWRA fees already paid, except for the current policy for projects that pull permits, um, but failed to start construction. So basically, someone who paid the fees six months ago, it's already been calculated, and it's already been contributed towards capital improvement projects. They, 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 according to this policy, they can't come in tomorrow and say, well, wait a minute, I want to pull my DIF fees back out and, and not pay for another year till I final. So it, it would only take effect from this point on. And this policy and the temporary deferral of DIF and BBWR And this policy and the temporary deferral of DIF and BBWRA fees shall expire on June 29, 2012, unless otherwise extended by the city council. So this policy just expires itself at that time. And the reason for the June dates and the July dates is to try to keep it within a fiscal year period, so that capital improvement projects can be planned for to the best extent possible, even though the funds are not there at the time. And therefore, this, that concludes the staff report. That's what we're presenting before the council for your consideration.
I have a question. When you establish the fee, then that carries it for the life of that, of the permit, or?
Absolutely.
For example, if there was an increase down the line, but within that time period, it would still be the original, the DIF fee that was established when they pulled it?
Absolutely. This does not change that. That is our current policy. As long as you keep your, as long as you keep your project alive and your permits alive, these are established upon submittal to building, and permits are pooled according to those fees, and as long as the plan check is current, and there's not more than a six-month lull or lapse, then those fees continue throughout the life of the project. And they continue, in this case, would be deferred, but those fees, once established, would be at the same rate through construction. They would not change.
Question?
I have nothing.
Good to be commended for coming up with this idea. I think it's important in economic times for all of us to think of ways to help out. And I'm just sorry for the one individual that he pulled his mitt last week.
We tried. And it was due to concerns of the council, obviously, that the issue was raised, and we appreciate it. Yeah, we tried, though.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Our own little economic stimulus package.
Economic stimulus package, yes.
Perhaps we can make, making a difference on the NBC nightly news, such as Lancaster did last night.
Would entertain a motion for item number 12?
Make a motion.
Okay. Or a second?
Second.
Where'd my vote go?
Voting yes, correct.
It vote yes.
Trying to.
Four votes coming.
It was voting for.
I see that. I'm trying to enter the vote for you. Let me try that again.
Went in the file.
Try it again. Vote again on that?
There was a motion? Hey. There we go, yeah. Okay.
Vote twice.
Item number 13, a presentation of board is number 2235 for second reading and adoption by the city council. Approval? Number 14, request to approve a partnership agreement and appoint liaison to assist with the census count. Would you have a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Dana Hernandez, and I'm a partnership specialist with the Census Bureau. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to let the city know what the census is doing. Census 2010 is the national count of the population of the United States, and the information that we collect is very important. We do it for two reasons. It's for political, political representation, and also for federal funding. The number, the data that we collect is used for redistricting, and especially in a community like, in a city like Victorville that had the fastest-growing city, second-fastest-growing city in the United States. The numbers are going to really make a difference. Also, a lot, the problem that we're having is that we're going to do the count, but we want to make sure that we get a complete and accurate count. So the Census Bureau has put together the partnership department, which is the department that I am a part of, and we are what's considered an awareness campaign. So the term partnership specialist refers to going out into the community and getting partners to partner with us. And by partnering with us, we want to make sure that everyone in the community is aware of the importance of being counted. A lot of people don't really understand, and what I mean by people, I mean the community. I'm not talking about the cities, businesses, schools. Everybody pretty much understands that, but the community at large is not very educated on the importance of the census. I've been doing this for a few months now. When I talk to people, they, a lot of people don't know what the census is. So, because of that, we have a really big job ahead of us. The city of Victorville in 2000 had a 62 percent response rate. The, I don't know what the national average was, but the San Bernardino County average was 68 percent. So we came up a little bit short. I say we because I live here in Victorville. So it's important to me that we get a good count here as well. 62 percent is very low. Now, what that means is that 62 percent of the households responded, so the difference, we don't know how many people we missed, because those households, they have varying amount of people that live there. So we don't know how many people we missed. That means money that did not come into the city. So that is a very important job that we have, to make sure that we get counted. So we need the support of the city. So what the Census Bureau has done is they have developed an idea that's called the Complete Count Committee, and it is designed to be overseen by the mayor, and therefore, because I cannot be the voice of the census to the community, it has to come from the leadership. Because people, you know, if I'm a government employee, they're going to think I have a hidden agenda, and that's not true, but people don't trust the government. I've been working with the census for a few years, and I have had doors slammed in my face because of people's lack of understanding. So I understand that, I do. But the message that we want, that we need the help to convey is that it's safe, it's confidential, everyone's information is confidential. We don't share any of our information with any other agency. No IRS, no tax, nothing, nobody. Not even the President of the United States has access to our data. Did you know that? Nobody has access to our data. So that's important, that we want the community to understand. Also, how simple it is. We have the shortest questionnaire in census history. Everyone is going to be getting the short form, up to 10 questions, 10 minutes, and the data that we get is going to be for 10 years. So very, very important, simple. And then, of course, how important it is. If we can convey the message to the community that this is going to bring money to our community for roads, for schools, for hospitals, for every type of social service that we depend on. Because we have the people here, but we, if we don't have the numbers, then we can't get the federal money for those services. So it's very important that everybody be a part of that. Now, the Complete Count Committee, I'm going to be the liaison, the census to the city, and we need somebody from the city to work with me, and we can, you know, get this moving. I've already met with the staff and explained to them it's how important it is. Of course, I'm preaching to the choir, because they know how important it is, but we need to get some, you know, action moving. I've already met with all the other cities also in the high desert, and we are actually coming together kind of like a high desert complete count committee, but with each city focusing in their own area. Now, the way that it works is that we want to target every area of the community, so we want to have subcommittees as well, and we can go into more detail later, because that could take a little bit of time. But we do want the support of the city, okay? So, and the way that we do that is through a partnership agreement with us. And it's nothing mandatory. This is all voluntary, because it is in the city's best interest to participate. So we want to make sure that everyone gets the word out, because we have different areas that we're targeting, through the schools, through the faith-based, because really, the people that we're targeting are the hard-to-count population. It's not really your average person who, you know, reads the paper, hears the news. They'll know. But we're talking about the Hispanic, not the, I shouldn't say Hispanic. Can we erase that from the record? The ethnic communities that have language barriers, culture issues, and, because there's a lot more than just Hispanic. We have a lot of different ethnic groups that we are targeting, because we want to make sure that they understand the importance. Because there's a lot of myths, you know, that it's only if you're a citizen, it's not. It's everyone, whoever you are, wherever you are. Any questions?
No, you're just asking for somebody to coordinate and support, but the census, the calendars are actually your people that are, the people paid by the Census Bureau going count.
Yes, that is correct. And I was, yeah, when I was reading what it said, I don't need someone to help me actually do the count.
Yeah, okay.
That is correct. What we need is, we need everyone to help me get the message out, get the word out. That's what we want to do.
Might seem like a stupid question, but just based on the national news, is Acorn as an organization, do they, do they participate in this census? I understood from the national news that they were, that organization, among others, was one of the participants in these census. Is that correct or not?
I am sorry, I am not familiar with Acorn.
Okay, let me ask a different question. To what level are you asking staff to participate? You said it was voluntary, and I agree with you, by the way, and I doubt whether you'll find one elected official in the entire state of California that would disagree that the census is extremely important and needs to be done and pursued, and any validity that we can put on top of that, the local officials obviously carry a bit more standing maybe than people distant. So if we stand up and say, hey, you need to really participate, it's not going to hurt you, that's, all that type of communication is good. But what I'm asking is, what are, what are we doing, city by city in the county, in terms of this participation? What is it of the taxpayers' resources that we're putting at, at your disposal? I mean, I'm not quite clear on what you're asking of us.
Well, it's, it's nothing that, that is going to be the same for every city, because each community is different. But, for example, one of the things that we are already doing in Victorville is that the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce has offered us a booth at the Cinco de Mayo Festival, so that we can have a presence there, so we can interact with the community and give out flyers and give out little giveaways, that, you know, we want to put the word out already, so people can start asking. That's one thing. So it's very easy, easy to, for us to jump on board to activities that are already in place in the city, to just have, and we do that. You just invite me, and we bring the staff, okay? So we man all these events. So that's one thing that you can do. The other thing that you can do is that we're, what we're kind of planning to do is when we get all the cities, you know, together, is to kind of do a little infomercial, that all, that all the elected officials are giving their support, their endorsement, that we can air on all the local channels, so that the community can hear it from the leaders, do a big press release of the mayors coming together to create that, just that little, put the seed out there, that the census is coming, so people can start talking about it and asking questions. Because there's a lot of questions, you know? Who gets my information? What do you want it for? What are you going to ask me? Why do you want it? I don't, what if I don't do it? These are the questions that we want to answer the community. So we're going to the faith-based organizations, so that the churches can help us also communicate with the congregations. The schools are going to be very important. We're already meeting with all the superintendents to go into the schools, so that we can do curriculum with the students, and therefore get the parent take-home information. And there is one thing I do want to tell you today, is that we do have an operation that is happening right now in the city of Victorville, which is the address canvassing. And what that is, is that we have census workers out on the field right now, and they're verifying addresses. And so if you get any calls from people saying that there's people out there with little computers, you know, what are they doing? They're walking around my neighborhood, and they are, in some occasions, they are knocking on people's doors, not to get information, but just to find out, are there any other living quarters at your address? Because we need to verify the addresses before, this is going to be a mail-out, mail-back form. So they're already out there now, and I did have a call today, asking me if I knew anything about that, and yes, I do. I already called the Daily Press, sent them the press release so that they can get that, also so people know that we are already out there on the field, with IDs, bags, et cetera. And I have literature that I'm going to leave here, you know, with you, for you, so that you can review all this information. And my card, so you can call me with any questions.
Just a tad more, bear with me here, because you seem to be the regional coordinator of this thing. I'm assuming that you're going to contact all three chambers, at least in Victorville, and there's other chambers. You mentioned the churches, there's an association of ministers, I believe, that pastors, that you might be able to collectively communicate with them, making sure you don't miss any of them. Some of the churches are more predominantly ethnic one way than another. And also your social, your Kiwanis, Optimists, you go down the list of those, is another area where, if, just for a postcard, at least, you could probably get their attention. And I mean, all those things would give me a lot more comfort, that you're touching all the way across the community and not any selected areas inadvertently or otherwise. So I'm hoping that that's part of your approach here.
Yes, and that's why I need a little bit of help, because there's a lot of people I need to contact, and if you can point me into, into the direction of where I go, I've already received a lot of very good contacts. I've met with the High Desert Resource Network, which is a large group of nonprofits that come together. So I've done that, I've met with all the chambers, so it's just a matter of, you know, getting on the agenda. So I'm definitely working, but with help of getting, you know, names and pointing me in the right direction, that will help. And one of the things that, that I had spoken about with Yvonne was compiling that list of, of, you know, leaders, or people that, you know, have contact with the community, and inviting everybody together. And that's the whole point of the committee, is coming together and brainstorming of, you know, what can we do? Where's our challenges? How can we do this? And coming together, because if everybody, if everybody has input, then we're going to do much better than just one person.
There is a request to approve the partnership, and I think it's, it's something that we need to do and want to do. It's very important that the population in City Victorville be counted, because you mentioned the funding and also the, the representation.
Right.
From the, from the numbers, so.
Yeah, I'm learning a lot as, working with the decennial, you know, speaking with, I met with the staff of the, our first district supervisor, and they were explaining to me how the number, how they divide the districts, and it's all based on population. So this census is going to be a big change in, in redistricting, not just in, in our county, but throughout the United States. There's going to be a lot of changes because of our census data, and we want it to be as accurate as possible. 62 percent, we have to do much better than that. We have to do that. And it's going to take everybody, everybody. We want to start from the top, bring it down to, to neighbor to neighbor, to where everyone's going to be aware and tell everybody. Tell your neighbor, tell a friend.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Entertain a motion to approve the partnership? Item 15, a request to award a contract to GM Business Interiors in the amount of $91,635.6 for design, reconfiguration, supply, and install furniture for the police station expansion.
Second.
I have a question before we?
Question?
Question to staff. Where is GM Business Interiors located?
Question?
Mayor, members of the council, go forth and Marty is located in San Bernardino.
Was there any effort to encourage similar businesses in Victorville, members of the chamber, to bid on this?
They are the people that have the contract, that did all of the previous furniture in the facility, and so it all matched. I don't, I don't know how the?
Right, purchasing.
Purchasing department.
We're just paying for the furniture and fixtures that Sheriff's Department determined that it was needed.
Yes, sir.
Bid process.
No, we're just, this is just the expansion into the offices and the expansion locker room.
They want to match the furniture that they put in there originally when they moved in, as well as this is already a state-approved, process that they've gone through and been approved by the state and the county to be on the purchasing list, so it's, it's one that they don't have to go out to bid, the prices are already set, and, and.
GSA, right.
Yeah, GSA, Government Services Agreement, so. And, and the main thing was the fact that they had already furnished the existing police station, and this was just for the expansion, so that everything would be the same, parts, color, size, everything would all be interchangeable.
Any other question? Would you have a motion in a second?
Open, as we go forward on that, that we make real big efforts to make sure that our purchases are local. Obviously, this is a significant purchase that you can spread around in a much larger area and get a benefit of, of very much of size, but as we go through and do these things, the first, first touch point, I've, I've forgotten to Mr. Caldwell, reminded us kind of a little bit, to always be shopping around local if we can. If we can't, we can't, but that's our first priority in terms of letting out the contracts.
Well, well said, and we do have a directive from the city council that we shop locally to the extent that we can. We understand the constraints sometimes, but, you know, that, that should be the first call. Thank you. Item sixteen, request to adopt a notice of exemption for the SCLA wastewater treatment plant sludge line project. Approval?
Prove the last one. All right, there.
Okay, there you go. Item number seventeen, the request for council to, one, forming council subcommittee for the express purpose of revising the current council facility policy. Number two, direct staff to review other municipalities' facility naming policies to bring to the subcommittee for its review and recommendations. And three, that the council subcommittee present its recommendation to the full city council for action. And we do have a, someone that wants to speak on item number seventeen, Felix Diaz.
You got my vote, Felix.
How do you, how do you wear that one in UCLA too, at the same time? Hello?
I'm USC and Notre Dame all the way. Anyway, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me this opportunity. It's been going on five years that I brought this up to three members of the council regarding, it, it, I brought it up even before the, the configuration of this building came up, and I brought up the, the attention to, like I say, three board members, three city council members, regarding the fact that I, I wanted to see that, that this new complex be named after a gentleman who is really a person that, that has made Victorville what it is today. Had it not been for his efforts, I don't, I don't think, well, I don't know, but I, I don't think Victorville would be what it is today, and that's Mr. Clyde Tatum. He did a lot, he did a lot, not only for Victorville, but for the whole valley. And I brought this to the attention of these three members, and they, they agreed with me. And since then, I've been working on this, but I realize it takes a long time. I, I, I don't, I've jumped through hoops, I've jumped over walls, I've done all kinds of things to try to get this, to this point, and I'm very, very glad that, that it's finally going to come to where you have now have a committee. But when I first brought this up, I was told to, to write a letter to the, to the city council, which I did. Then I was referred to a committee, and then I went to the committee, I believe it was your, your community services committee, and I went to three of their meetings, they voted, and sometimes they, they didn't vote because they didn't have a quorum. And then as late as October the eighth, I was supposed to be making this specific presentation, and I was told that, that there weren't enough members of the council present at that, at that meeting. So anyway, to make a long story short, I'm glad that it's, that it's finally going to come to fruition where we can make, make a recommendations, and I know that, that this takes a long time, because at the present time, with the Victorville, at Victor Valley High School Board of Festives, we're, we're going through the same process. I've recommended that we name the floor at Victor Valley High School Gymnasium, Keith Gudmund Gymnasium, to name the floor after Ollie Butler, and finally came to a vote. I brought this up last year, and it's taken this long, and they, they said that, no, we couldn't do it, because the last, the last board had voted to have to wait five years before that could be done, that a person had to be dead five years, and of course, Ollie Butler's not dead yet, so we would have had to wait five years. So it was voted down, so we're going to bring, we're bringing it up again to override, overrule the, the previous policy. And I'm assuming that this may have to be the case here, but I'm, I'm very, very happy that, that this, this will finally come to fruition, and I, and I really, really hope that, that you concur that, that this complex should be named after Mr. Tatum. He's a great man, and he donated all the land where we're sitting here today, including the, the land where the, where the courthouse is, the parking lot, all this whole land here, and several other places here in the, in the valley that he donated. He was, his company first built the quarry housing at George Air Force Base, back then when it was called Victorville Airport, Army Airport, and he had a lot to do with the development of the city, and thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you, Felix. The reason for the, the policy review is that that policy is probably nineteen eighty-three, it's an old policy, very vague, and so we want to make sure we have a, a current policy with the, all the criteria, because there'll be other requests, and that way, we don't have to wait like we've been waiting, they'll, we'll have a criteria, we'll go by it, and if it meets the criteria, then, then the request can be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion for item number seventeen.
Item eighteen, it's a request to approve the findings, finding that the Atalanta Gateway Industrial Project is consistent with SCLA's comprehensive land use plan.
Contain a motion?
Second.
Request to adopt resolution number zero nine zero one six, entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Supporting Local Real Estate Services for the Victor Valley.
Vote for approval.
Item number twenty, it's a discussion of city policy for distribution of VITA tax increment.
I, I put under discussion because I'd like the council to consider going to the same policy that we have with the other cities in the county on VITA, and that is the fifty-fifty discretion, where fifty percent of that tax increment goes into the SCLA VITA, and the other fifty percent is, goes back to the cities. Since the City of Victorville Council is the acting authority for that, those programs and the, the plans that we put in place there, essentially, I'm not asking for any fundamental change. A change could happen in the future if somehow the document, the way we are doing business changes, and it goes back to VITA as, as the entity that makes those decisions on where project money is to be spent, priorities and that sort of thing. At the moment, it's in the, in the hands of the City of Victorville, we've done a great job with this over the years. I'm concerned about what has been happening recently with the county and others, having concerns about how we've done business, and I would just remind everybody that certainly for the first close to ten years, almost all of the financial burden has been carried on the shoulders of the City of Victorville, and it's just been in recent years that with those successes and others around that we have finally come to a point where other communities are contributing into that process. We're still, as we sit here today, the City of Victorville and, and all of the boundaries associated with us are seventy-five percent of the resources that go into the VITA organization. Also, I'm asking the council to do is to consider making our policy going forward the same as the other cities in the county have, for good reason. We were investing a hundred percent of ours into there now, but I can envision projects in the future that may run afoul of some of the interests of the other community or the county. Certainly, the east-west corridor comes to mind, a number of big-ticket item projects that could spring off of that freeway corridor from the fifteen to the three ninety-five. The Desert Express coming from Las Vegas to Victorville might be perceived as more parochial to the City of Victorville than to the others, and I want, I'd like us to have that discretion to use that other fifty percent of our VITA money into those project areas as well. And of course, the rail intermodal is no small item either, it's two hundred million, three hundred million on the get-go. So the amount of money that we're speaking about right now is about fourteen million that we're putting in, seven million is, would be the fifty percent break, just as a round number. So the numbers are substantial even on today's size, but in the future, it may get even much larger, and I want the discretion, at least from this city and its future city council, to have total control over its fifty percent share of that VITA tax increment money. As it sits here right now, it is effectively dedicated a hundred percent to the VITA and its legal documents. So I would ask in the council to consider with the attorney review and Keith Metzler's review, making sure that we're not injuring any ongoing bonding that we have and committed to now, that when we go forward, that we make that commitment only at the discretion of this council, and any past commitments stand, or, you know, we're, we're not going to take those away, but have those stand, and that commitments are there, and as, and as the deck clears moving forward, that the fifty-fifty rule applies to the City of Victorville as it does to the other four member cities in the county. So that's the request I have for the council. Any other discussions, you can go ahead and put them forward now, but that's the, my intent of this motion. A, a, a future council meeting, there would be a, a motion to be, to have the attorney and the.
Attorney and staff, bring back.
Yeah, bring it back as a fifty-fifty going forward, and guaranteeing that we, that we don't injure any of our bonding that we have currently in play. Mayor Kirby Ellis, I, I think it would be instructive and appropriate, part of any consideration, that we ask staff to give us several things. First, I think a history, chronological sequence of how we started and, and why, and secondly, a quantification of what the relative contributions have been, both in terms of the tax increment, as well as the specific monetary shares that have gone into the base over the years. Very recently, I asked Keith Metzler, staff did provide the numbers that show the geographical makeup of VITA in terms of square miles, population, assessed value, and derivative tax increment monies in terms of the fifty percent that goes in. I, I think that that body of information is essential for us to understand not only what we've done, but what the ramifications and implications, if any, might be if we were to change the policy. I think some of the work's already been done, I don't want to speak for Mr. Metzler. I don't see, oh, there he is, back there in the back of the room. Don't go out the back door, Keith. But I really think that it's not just for the benefit of the five of us who would make the decision for what Victorville does, but I think it's important that the entire community know of this body of information, no matter what the ultimate decision of the council.
Well, I would agree with that. I would also like you to have, or find out in that report, when it comes back, is the incentives that are out there, I think the fees are not collected, or are they?
At SCLA.
At SCLA, yeah. And any other thing that we're, that, you know, that we're doing out there where we don't collect, so they can show what, how much, you know, we have, that's a contribution also to that effort. Go ahead, Keith.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe to help service background and overview, you're all generally familiar with the history that involves the closure of George Air Force Base, which actually took place in December of nineteen ninety-two. However, that announcement to close Georgia, huh? Yes, I'm sorry, what did I say? Oh, December nineteen ninety-two, I'm sorry. The announcement to close former George Air Force Base took place in December of nineteen eighty-eight. And as immediate response to that, there were collective efforts from all of the jurisdictions, excluding Atalanta at the time, to develop some kind of reuse authority, because that was a requirement as a part of the transfer process, to transfer the former military base into local control. VITA was that organization, then it was the members of the County of San Bernardino, the City of Victorville, Hesperia, Town of Apple Valley. Atalanta currently is a member, but they didn't subsequently come on as a member until two thousand. VITA was formed as a redevelopment authority under California state law, and currently exists as a redevelopment authority. It was originally intended that VITA would be the organization responsible for the redevelopment reuse of George Air Force, now SCLA. But as the doors closed, the fences were locked to that facility, there was a extensive amount of upkeep, maintenance, just to keep the facility from going totally rapid, for lack of better terms. The way VITA was structured, because there weren't any tax increment revenues in place, which is what redevelopment agencies typically rely on, it operated annually, approving a budget which required direct contributions from the general funds of the respective jurisdictions that make up, that made up VITA. And during that time, of course, this was after nineteen ninety-two, and I think from a timeframe from ninety-two forward to about nineteen ninety-six, was a time when all the cities were short of cash. In fact, very plainly put, I think the only city that really had the ability to continue to keep financially the operations and the upkeep afloat was the City of Victorville. So there was an effort in the ninety-six, ninety-seven timeframe to address the long-term interest of VITA in directly redeveloping the former George Air Force Base facility, and through an amendment to the JPA, VITA basically agreed to turn over the redevelopment responsibility to the City of Victorville, which the City of Victorville then created the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. And it is today the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority that is responsible solely for the redevelopment at. Financially, how this, how things work today. Financially, how this, how things works today, VITA still exists. Its responsibilities are fairly limited in nature. It does have an ongoing marketing program, but it is the recognized redevelopment authority to the state of California and to the County of San Bernardino. And that's important because the County of San Bernardino cuts checks, tax increment collection checks, to VITA. VITA is then responsible to distribute those collection checks to the redevelopment agencies of the respective jurisdiction. Maybe to give a sense and overview of how tax increment works, your very typical tax bill, excluding overrides, which are bond payments to schools and things like that, your very basic property tax levy is 1% of assessed valuation. The way redevelopment agencies work is for all incremental increases in property taxes above what they call a base year, the redevelopment agency has the ability to recapture a large share of that 1%. The way you can very generally carve that 1% up is 20% of the 1% immediately comes off the top to benefit affordable housing. That gets passed through to the respective jurisdictions. The next carving up of that 1% then goes to school districts. We call them pass-through entities, but it's school districts, sometimes fire districts, whatever the special districts might be in the respective jurisdiction. And then typically, that's in the 25% measure after the housing number. What's left over then is available as gross tax increment to a redevelopment agency. But councilmember Rothschild is speaking to is that remaining portion of tax increment. Currently, the JPA for VITA dictates that of the tax increment generated in each of the respective jurisdictions, 50% of that has to go back to benefit the development at Southern California Logistics Airport. The remaining 50% of that can then be retained by the respective redevelopment agency of the respective jurisdiction to be used for quote redevelopment purposes that are of benefit to the VITA project area. In Victorville's case specifically, that same application applies where 50% goes to SCLA, 50% can technically be used for projects within the project area. Currently, the VITA project area in total is about 86,000 acres. Victorville's portion of that maybe is 45,000 to 50,000 acres. I don't have the exact number, but that's just an order of magnitude. But when you talk about the aggregate of tax increment receipts, we're probably generating as Victorville, close to 75% of the total tax increment generated from the project area. Getting back to councilman Rothschild's question is with respect to what we've done in practice since we've taken over the responsibility of redeveloping George Air Force Base. And what we've recognized all along is that the capital needs to maintain, not only maintain, but to facilitate future development, current and future development. There's a substantial amount of capital improvements necessary. I mean, if I had to imagine a number, it's well in excess of a couple hundred million. I mean, just, it's a big number. So, what we've done over the time, currently, we have close to $300 million in bonds that were issued by the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority that are secured by that tax increment that councilman Rothschild is speaking to. As security for all of those bonds is 100%, what's required to go back to SCLA, but also that amount that could otherwise be used on projects that are of general benefit to Victorville's portion of the VITA project area. And we've done that, obviously, to try to increase the sizing of our debt issuances to the largest of our capabilities so that we can satisfy the need for improving Southern California Logistics Airport. I think going forward, certainly, I think the question before the council in terms of policy is going forward, because certainly, we have obligations that remain that still rely on that same amount of tax increment. But I think it would be appropriate if the council were to consider the policy change to not send the 50% of its general tax increment to SCLA, that it probably determine what capital improvements can still be envisioned as necessary. Because the capital improvements, even though we've had some substantial success out at SCLA, there's still a lot of work to do. And, you know, we have to definitely make sure that going forward, we're not neglecting those capital improvement needs. That's not to say we should be relying 100% on tax increment. I mean, I could definitely imagine as a part of the assessment, that if we did want to free up the 50% tax increment for other general redevelopment purposes, you know, that we would have to look at other mechanisms, maybe, maybe DIF as an example, maybe reinstituting a DIF fee program at SCLA to help generate the funds that are still necessary to make those improvements. Maybe other financing programs such as creating assessment districts. There's ways to do it. But at the very least, I think the most appropriate research would be from the perspective of going forward and not changing what has happened in the past. One thing that councilman Rothschild and I did discuss, and I'm not sure I've actually ever seen an official policy, it's just been, it's just been longstanding practice and it has been memorialized in all of the official statements for the bonds that we've issued. But one of the things that I, that we did talk about is the possibility of making that a policy as a function of the annual budget adoption, to where that's a budget policy that if we're doing a redevelopment agency budget and the redevelopment agency budget says $30 million is your budget, and oh, by the way, 10% represents that 50% amount, you know, maybe it could be a budget policy to dictate in that fiscal year what's happening with the $10 million. I think there's options, I guess is the bottom-line conclusion. I'm not so sure it's entirely inappropriate to consider that.
Questions?
No, I think two things. I think it would be helpful, Mr. Metzler, if you could just briefly, I'm assuming that this ad hoc oral presentation isn't intended to take the place of a more detailed written Well, I go back to the numbers that I asked for and you provided a few weeks ago, which were good numbers in terms of the various contributions, both in terms of tax increment, geography, population served, et cetera, plus the history. The problem sometimes is we have these discussions and then it gets lost. And if we're going to talk about a fundamental shift in public policy, I realize you've got a lot of things on your plate already, but I really think to consider making a substantial public policy shift from the decisions that were made in the early 90s on a go-forward basis, that we ought to have some more detail than just this explanation. And the reason is, is that the decision we make, although it's unilateral and only affects City of Victorville, will have public policy implications to the other members of VITA. Because the, you know, if we make that change, the revenue stream that currently is dedicated exclusively to job generation and economic enhancement on the base for the benefit of the entire Victor Valley will be reduced. And while we would have the unilateral right to do that, I think that our sister cities and the county will be interested in not just the motivation, but the impacts. And that's why, why I hate to burden you with more projects like that. I, for one, would like to see that happen. But I think it would be also helpful if you could just briefly comment on what Mayor Cabray Alice raised, is the issue of why DIF fees are handled differently on former George Air Force Base from the balance of the city. Because it's something that is not well-understood and mentioned might be a part of some public policy reorganization with regard to tax increment at George Air Force Base.
Right. And I agree. I mean, I think if the council so desired to change policy, then obviously, we'd go back and do a much larger fiscal analysis. But the decision to assist, I'm sorry, the decision to not adopt a DIF program at SCLA, I want to recall, was done back in 1996. And this was at a timeframe when there weren't any tax increment revenues. Tax increment revenues, though small, weren't first generated until, I want to say, 2000, the fiscal year ending 2000. So, plan that we've embarked on has been ambitious from day one, and it's still ambitious. It is achievable. But I think very clearly that what the city's policy back then was, was to do whatever possible to try to encourage and incent development. And it's not just so much about an incentive, it's about trying to create an opportunity where a business can locate there and operate cost-effectively. So, certainly, not adopting a DIF program helps reduce some of the front-end costs of development, of course. It was definitely expected that that, combined with the favorable land prices, the favorable employment costs, the abundance of labor, that that, you know, in an aggregator and a totality, would be helpful in trying to encourage that initial, or seed that initial development out at SCLA.
Well, I agree. Back in 1996, you know, it was appropriate, you know, times have changed, we, like Mike indicated, we need to look at that, and not just at the DIF, but I would like to, the incremental tax, the 100% instead of 50, but also the DIF fees or any other incentive that's out there, I think we need to review that, because some of us in the council weren't aware of that.
As I understand it from, and maybe Ryan would jump in here, the Sandbag has now recognized that RDA money can be used for such things as Nisqually's and that type of stuff in terms of backfilling in terms of our match, right?
Well, they've recognized that we can use RDA funding, in essence, or any funding that we might have, to, in essence, construct La Mesa-Nisqually or any future interchange, for that matter. However, the issue of developer fair share being 50% and still having that pay back, whatever money we use from RDA is still on the table, that issue still has not been resolved completely. At the end of the day, what they are saying is you can use whatever funds you want, but development impact fees ultimately have to pay back. So, you know, that becomes a question with the future interchange for the E220 at the I-15. Does Sandbag have any say in that? And there's a lot of jockeying going on right now, trying to get control of that intersection. But to answer your question, RDA funds can be used, but in essence, what they refer to as new development and development paying its fair share is still a moving target. And that issue, although the strategic plan for 2010, 2040 has been adopted, that question hasn't been completely answered by all legal counsel yet. Even our own city attorney's office has been working on that, trying to, in essence, figure out a way that within the law, that we could still use those funds. So, hopefully, that, the answer to that question will be forthcoming. I just, I agree with councilman Caldwell. I think we need to have a history, especially I do, of what's gone on, what City of Victorville has put into SCLA, from the tax increment, as well as whatever else we've had to contribute towards it. But I'd also like to know philosophically where this is going. I have tremendous concerns about your ability to attract big names like Dr. Pepper Snapple if all of a sudden, we're not contributing to the infrastructure at the level that we have been. You know, I want you to be able to, and I want this city to be able to create jobs. I mean, at the end of the day, we still benefit the most, whether it's 50% or 100%, Victorville still benefits the most from jobs created at SCLA. Those people live in homes in our community. They shop at our facilities. That's sales tax revenue, that's property tax revenue, that's, they're going to be using our new sewer plant. You know, all those types of things, you know, we can look at numbers all day long, and I think the numbers are important. But I wasn't here when the decision was made previously, so I would like some history on that. But I also like to know philosophically, from your perspective, does this tie your hands in being able to, in essence, attract companies like Dr. Pepper Snapple or the bottling company that comes with them? Or hamper our ability to look at doing anything else out there, building more hangars, that type of thing? Because I think philosophically, the justification was to create jobs, and if all of a sudden, we pull back that 50%, it does have a tremendous impact, not only just on the City of Victorville, but all the other cities in the high desert, the county. And I do think that they would want to know what was going on. That's not to say that we shouldn't go down that road, but I think philosophically, we need to know, from your perspective, I mean, what would you be doing at SCLA if we're not contributing that whole 100%? Would you still have the ability to attract those jobs?
Well, I can tell you that the policy that we've been kind of operating under certainly makes it easy to focus our priorities. And I say that because if you had a division, if the policy wasn't clear, and you created a sense of competition for that finite resource, even though today, it is a big number, it's finite in my mind when you try to compare it against the overall infrastructure needs at SCLA. I mean, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that we're looking at immediately is, you know, typical infrastructure, but we still have a lot of old and dilapidated residential units out there that are tremendously expensive to demolish, because it's not only demolition costs, there's a lot of remediation environmental, and there's probably stuff out there that we still don't know about. I mean, we did experience a small case of that, just in the Dr. Pepper site itself. So, you know, I definitely could see the potential where it becomes more difficult if we're trying to internally compete for that tax increment resource for projects that are not SCLA projects. I also can say that, you know, from the policy perspective, it sends a very strong message, not only to the member jurisdictions of VITA, but it sends a strong message to the development community and the industrial users, that we have resources necessary to help facilitate their business expansions, relocations, their ability to do business cost-effectively. So, you know, I could see, philosophically, I could see the potential where that would have some meaningful negative repercussions unless you found some kind of mechanism to backfill it. But my fear is, and I'd be glad to do the fiscal exercise, I probably wouldn't spend too much time on anything other than focusing on sources and uses, such as what's available in tax increment, and what do you have to spend it on over the course of the next 20 years. I have a gut feeling that that number is so big in terms of what your infrastructure obligation is out there, that it might answer the question in itself, that if you were to take away the tax increment and try to supplement it with some other resource, that some other resource might not be big enough to fulfill that infrastructure obligation. That's my opinion today. I mean, I could certainly research it in greater detail and provide some backup.
Keith, you know, the 50%, the other cities in the county could, if they wanted to dedicate their 50% back into SCLA, right? There's nothing legally prohibiting them from doing. So, here we are as a city council and the airport authority. I'm simply saying, you get 14, today's dollar was, I think we came up with 14 million, that may or may not be perfectly accurate, but let's call it 14 million. And we put seven, we put all 14 million into SCLA, opposed to saying, okay, 7 million is 100% going to SCLA, and here's the council, airport authority, redevelopment agency authority, having the other 7 million in our hands and saying, well, there's nothing else, there's no other projects out there that hold priority over this council at this time. We're going to dedicate it in, and if we encumber that for bonding into the future, that's our call today. And 20 years from now, before this RDA runs out, a future council may want to go at a different tack and use those resources, not encumber them strictly within the SCLA boundary area. That's where I say, it does, to me, it doesn't limit us at all right now. Right now, it's 100%, whether it's 50, called 50-50 or 100% one way. To me, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility and future councils' flexibility with the same numbers coming through the same five with the same numbers coming through, the same five people making the same decisions.
Yeah, I do understand your point, and I think the only reaction that I would offer to the rest of the council is, I think you still have that discretion going forward. I mean, if it was determined in the future, I don't necessarily think that a change would be appropriate today or even beneficial today. But maybe going forward, you know, let's say, five years down the road or 10 years down the road, things change, maybe, you know, through our partnerships, we're able to find that they're able to raise additional capital to help offset some of the costs that would have otherwise been burdened by us. If the environment changed, then you still, as the council, acting as the airport authority board, do have those discretion to change the policy at that later date as well.
What's the downside to changing it now and worry about the future coming along later? We write two pieces of papers to the one in terms of the commitment of the tax increment.
To be honest with you, I'm not sure I see anything to gain by changing it today. But I still think you, as a body, have the ability to change it in the future. Really a discretionary action of the council.
Well, I think what the discussion will center around is getting the information back. Doesn't mean we're going to change the policy. We look at the information, the numbers and so on, and then we can, down the line, we'll make a decision.
Yeah. And maybe just to conclude, where I think it would be good is if we were totally satisfied with our ability to perform SCLA to the point where you had, you know, maybe what you would call surplus or a discretionary amount of tax increment that we had nothing better to do with. That's when I see absolutely it would make sense. Maybe there's a special project in the city, maybe a commercial infill project, whatever it might be, that needs to be incented because the marketplace isn't going to take it on itself, then yeah, absolutely, I would say that that's probably a worthwhile proposition.
Okay. Any other comment?
Will you be able to have this report in 30 days or a council meeting a month from now?
Is that the consensus of the council that we, I mean, do we, in fact, want to do that analysis? Is that a collective?
Two months?
When you're ready.
When you're ready.
When you're ready.
You don't give them that kind of money.
That might be two months.
Keith, maybe as a starter, trying to get people focused on it, maybe you could circulate to the council, the numbers that you generated for me, that I used at the VITA meeting to point out to the VITA members, statistical relationship between the city of Victorville, the other cities, and the county. That was very useful, and some of the people who looked at those numbers that day when I passed them out were quite surprised where Victorville is in terms of its contributions to the welfare of the Victor Valley, based on what goes on at the base. I would encourage you to have Sophie or somebody distribute that to the council right away.
That doesn't even include the in-kind.
It's nothing to do with the in-kind, it's raw dollars and raw population, square mile counts.
I can produce that fairly easily. I hedge on answering your question about getting a report, obviously, because I'm trying to assess in my head the scope of that. And one of the biggest challenges, I'll have to work with our city engineer and maybe do some numbers on the sky, is just getting a real general sense of what the infrastructure magnitude is at at SCLA. I mean, because there's definitely stuff that we envision being developed out maybe over the course of the next 10 years, but I think there's infrastructure obligations that would extend beyond that, you know, maybe into the 10 to 20-year lifecycle, to which we haven't even really given much thought to as terms of. But I can put something together.
Any other questions? Thank you, Keith. Item number 21, the request to appoint the city manager as the city's alternate representative to the Victor Valley wastewater reclamation authority.
Give him another job. Second.
By the way, is that by title or name? Are we just making the city manager the alternate? By title, by, you understand what I'm saying? We don't have to do this a year from now?
Yeah, just keep him on.
John Roberts was the alternate prior to that. And your first meet, Mr. Cox, is April the 16th at 7:40.
Thank you.
Council reports, item 22.
Bobo.
Sorry, I have a few, and I don't want to belabor this, but going back to the consent report, I just want to commend our sheriff's department. I'm loving this proactive patrol as the percentages go up, the number of calls go down. It does work, a 17% decrease for the month of January. I just continue to be impressed by that. And I actually, it's not only on paper, but I actually see your guys out just rolling around, making sure that there's nothing going wrong. So I'm very happy to see that. I appreciate the Public Information Department, Yvonne Hester, and what you've put together for us, that you passed out today, and looking into several different things. But specifically, Sunset Ridge Park and the fire station, according to this, the fire station is six to seven weeks from completion. So publicly, I'm going to ask our city fire chief, Sid Holquist, to bring forth to this council at the next or following council meeting, a request for funding to staff that, to equip it. Obviously, public safety being the number one priority of the city council, we need to make sure that when that fire station's ready to open, that it's ready to open. I'd hate to have a ground or a ribbon cutting and no firefighters or equipment in that place. And other than that, I'd just ask our city manager, as much as we had a report on this water billing issue and that it was gone away, I got an email just last week from Carol Lee, and Carol Lee, I'm not picking on you, you're just the messenger, over 400 letters had to go out due to deposits not being properly applied. I think it's high time we do something different. So I would really like you to, I'd really like to see you meet with staff and figure out a way to fix this, because it's just not going away.
Are you done? Okay, I guess Captain Taylor's going to get a really big head. Tonight, I want to say thank you so very, very much to our wonderful fire department and our shared department. I left here Tuesday, last Tuesday, from our meeting and went home. And you guys, when I asked if it was hot, if anybody smelled smoke in our meeting room, it was kind of a premonition, because when I drove up to our street, there was a garage on fire right next to my son's home and across the street from our home with bullets flying out of the garage. It sounded like World War III. And I'll tell you what, when the sheriffs rolled up and they started yelling, whatever it is they had, the bullhorn or whatever, for everybody to get in the house and get away from the windows, I pulled up and my husband's yelling at me, get out of the car and get in the house. And I'm going, where's the fire department? No. But the fire department did a wonderful job. They blocked the garage with one of the engines, and I understand, one of our engines from Station 13 has a few merit badges. But I can thank you, both the sheriffs and the fire. I mean, I was so proud to be a council member that night, and everybody, it was like old home week, too, for some of the fires coming up and giving me hugs, all wet and dirty. But it was great. It was great, and I can't thank you. It was, no one got hurt, and everything was put out really quick. The smell was atrocious, but from the sulfur, from the, thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I have no comments. We'll now move into closed session.
All of the closed sessions are fully described on the agenda. If there's any action taken, we will come out and announce any of those actions. And there's the add-on item as well, which has already been included.
Okay.
To go out and retain auditing firms as quickly as possible. Two reportable actions out of the city's closed session. First is a unanimous vote to authorize the city manager to go out and retain auditing firms to expedite city's auditing process. The second is the city unanimously voted to make Mr. Jim Cox a permanent city manager as opposed to interim.